Clerk Segrist, if you could please call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. The record reflect Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Hi, everyone.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening.
We're gonna have a few minor adjustments to the agenda this evening. If I could ask Clerk Segrist to provide us with a motion for those changes.
All right, Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda removing item 13, approve agreement for construction of Patriot Park access driveway, and adding item G-13A, which is located in the back. Consider request of corporation counsel and authorize to proceed as directed regarding a labor matter, and item G-13B, which is in the back as well, and everybody here should have a copy in front of them. Consider request of corporation counsel and authorize to proceed as directed regarding the Hamlet Pond.
Good. Those in favor of the amended agenda as presented, please state aye.
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 Motion carries. Let's see, we have two, actually, three sets of meetings, minutes to be approved. First, call for a motion to approve the minutes of October 24, 2017.
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. A call for a motion to approve the minutes of November 2, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A call for a motion to approve the minutes of November 7, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it's time in the agenda for non-agenda item comments and public comments. Now would be the time, yes, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, George Miller, I'd like to know, I addressed in the last month, what's gonna be done about the contractor on Briarfield Street when they were put in the water main, some of that damage had been done to the street. What's gonna be done about it, if anything? What actions is the board gonna take? I looked in that contract, got a copy of it, and I don't see anything specifying, like I've complained before, about heavy equipment on streets and tearing it up with the cleats with their excavator. And when it rains, especially, last year we had concrete poured and it rained on it, downpour, thunderstorm, two inches of rain. And those people, they bid hundreds of thousands of dollars a job and then they don't put a piece of visqueen over it and a few bricks to keep it from flaking off and the aggregate coming out of the concrete. What's your plan to do something about it? I'd like to know. You have one?
Public comment time, George.
Yeah, well, you know, we address this, and it never, there's never nothing ever done about it. Public comment. I've asked just many times, just like the issues I just talked about, for it being done, and it's nothing in the contract for those people. I mean, the contractors write their own book. We, the taxpayers and the subdivision people, the homeowners association had to pay for some of that stuff.
I do believe, George, and I'm gonna go beyond here a little bit to help you out here, is the, the question has been asked, and I believe it has been answered, in terms of, with all the agreements we have with outside contractors doing water work or other work in the community, there is a standing agreement within those contracts to, Tim, am I correct, to put back to the original state any damage that is done on the properties along. Also, furthermore, George, I've driven down your street.
Pardon me?
I've driven down your street and taken a good, you know, personal look at what's going on there. But, Tim, is that an accurate statement, that in all of our agreements, we have language to restore back to the original state?
Yes, it's a requirement under the Wayne County permit.
You need to look at some of the sewers down there where they've caved them in, the manhole covers for the sanitary, sanitary storm. And some of, and some of the other curves before they put the grass down around some of these driveways where they've chipped it out six and eight inches at a time. If any contractor did that, or any individual out here, they, you'd run them off. That's been done. I assure you. And like I said, with the, with the concrete a year ago, there's no, I don't know why there's any provisions, not put in a contract for that. Hundreds of thousands of dollars and you act like $500, it's a nickel and dime outfit for a mom and pop outfit. They've had money. They ran over there with a 15-ton front end loader where they could've done it with a lighter one. Every, every, where the street was up and down, they've sheared every, you look at it closely, they sheared every up and down piece of concrete down there with that front end loader. It's been sheared off an inch and a half.
Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comment? Right now, sir, it would be the time to talk about anything that's not on the agenda this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, then there'll be an opportunity to speak then. But if it's not on the agenda, now would be the time.
Good evening, my name's Charles Geller. I don't think my item's on the agenda. I spoke with Ms. Slavens yesterday as I came in to pay my water bill. Yes, sir?
Could we get an address? It's not required, but we ask that.
I live on Scarborough Road in Hamlet Meadows, off of Proctor.
What was your last name?
Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R. I just moved to this area about six months ago, and a couple weeks ago, we were surprised to get a $2,200 water bill in the mail. Have lived here, or sorry, lived in Lansing for about six years, and I lived in Indiana prior to that. Yes, we put in a yard, put in a sprinkler as required by the neighborhood, ran it for the required three weeks per the contractor to get the sod to take, and then I shut it off for the rest of the summer. As you know, it was kinda actually hard to dry the yard out this year with, we got enough rain. So again, we were surprised to find out we had used 170,000 gallons. So I do believe we have a leak. Unfortunately, our sprinklers already been winterized. I'll have to wait till the spring to figure all that out. But in the meantime, I fortunately did some investigation in why the rates are so high compared to where I lived before. And in Lansing to here, the rates are about 20% higher for both the water and the sewer, both. In Lansing, they cap your sou, sewer from April till Labor Day based on knowing that people will run their sprinklers, so you don't pay extra sewer, knowing that your water from the sprinkler doesn't go back to the sewer. Prior to that, I lived in Indiana, and in Indiana, they allow you to have a second water meter, so that you do not pay extra sewer for the water that goes to the outside. So that's what I talked with Ms. Slavens about yesterday, that that has been a topic of discussion within the township for some time. I'm here to voice my opinion for something to be done. In this case, even, even the water that we did use, whether it was a leak or not, the amount that we will be asked to pay for that 170,000 gallons is, is very ridiculous, in all honesty. So I know if you put in a second water meter, or you give a reduced rate on, on the sewer, sewage, one logic will be that the money still has to come from somewhere to pay for the water. I, I understand that. Maybe the water rates would go up again some more. If that's how that has to be, then at least you're paying for the water that you use and you're not paying for sewage that gets returned. But we also have to kinda look around and ask, where's the money going for that much water to be this much higher when our state's capital can figure out how to get water significantly less and sewage less? So that's my comment. I don't know that you have any return comment. Again, I'll go out and take a second mortgage on the house so I can pay the bill here, as that's more than my mortgage payment. Obviously, it's probably more than everyone's in here. So there's my, my comment.
We do appreciate the comments, and the, we have upcoming negotiations occurring in the very near future with Great Lakes Water Authority in terms of future, next year rates?
Correct. Starting Monday.
Monday. Are they, will they be taking into account the fact that we brought online the story?
Starting in July of next year, we would conceivably get a lower rate from Great Lakes Water Authority, which is our wholesale provider, where we get our water from.
Concept, there are infrastructure moves that we're making to reduce our year-over-year increases. Additionally, there is offline discussions occurring with surrounding communities to possibly buy water together to reduce the cost of water from Great Lakes Water Authority. And then in terms of rate setting, that's next April?
We'll actually begin, as soon as we get our contract negotiated and approved, we'll begin the process of setting the rates for next year in January. So typically, we kinda do our math, January, February, and March, and then present that to the township board, usually kind of around the end of March, beginning of April, and then the board goes through two readings of the ordinance to amend the rates in April, and the new rates take effect May the 1st. One thing that we've committed to do, to at least preliminarily take a look at, the, the question of the second water meter. Don't wanna make any promises that that's something that's going to happen next year, but we'll begin looking at that analysis this coming season, presuming all the rate negotiations go the way we think they will with GLWA.
Well, I could tell from a baseline perspective, based on the conversation you've had with Treasurer Slavens, that you've got a pretty rough understanding of how we, we do set the rates here. So there'll be an opportunity in the near future for you to participate. So watch for the public notices, and there'll be an opportunity to come back and share your opinions again. Very good.
And then, yeah, just real quick, I'll, what Tim had said, end of March, beginning of April, we'll have a study session. They'll go over the rates and what they found, and so it's really helpful. As a resident, we find it very helpful to the elected officials, so that would be something good to, to come to as well. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Right now, we're looking for public comment for an item that's not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you wait till that item comes up. But if it's not on the agenda, now would be the time to speak. Would you like to? Please come to the podium, and we'd ask that you share your name and address, and then request that we limit to three minutes. Limit to three minutes?
Hi, how are you? How are you? My name's Robbie Farhat. I live at 44451 Fair Oaks Drive. I had a occurrence in my home this year where a faulty corner of the joints of my water pipes in my house burst. And I was out of town, and by the time I got back into town, it was a good, maybe 12 days later, I'd gone to my office in Farmington Hills. I received a call from the Canton Water Department saying that some 500,000 gallons had gone through the home. And the home has been denied by the insurance company to mitigate or do any type of remedying for that situation. I put personal contractors and stuff to remove carpets and to replace sub-pump and do what I could do. Since then, I've had to remove the drywalls and stuff, and I've had no, because there's no advanced system, like if your water's triple usage, there was no way to detect that there was an actual problem. And I wasn't in town. By the time I got back, it was just a terrible mess. Like I said, the insurance company has totally denied, it's not personal property, they said. Water's not personal property, and yet I've been charged like the top rate of the water as though it was processed and used. And it's just a terrible hardship. You know, I understand there's a hardship board, if there's other folks, but I figured the best place would be is to speak to you folks first. And I mean, I'm just looking for some kind of relief, is there any kind of catastrophic relief, or even to cover the cost that the city pays for the water, 'cause it's a great amount of water. And I just need help. I have to still deal with the construction. I've been left completely alone, but from the other forces that be, and I throw myself at your mercy. That's it.
And I appreciate it, and there is, Treasurer Slavens.
The amount is actually $6,600 for the water bill.
Treasurer Slavens' office is responsible for working with and through.
Right, and, and I have had some discussion with you, and, and you have to remember that those dollars, we can't use taxpayer dollars to pay your water bill. And so that, we're willing to work with you, I understand that, but, you know, we cannot pay.
Even if I covered the cost the city pays, it's a much different price than they're charging. I would be willing to, I mean, I'm looking to do my part, but I think my part is not the extravagant amount that's been charged to me. On top of everything else I have to deal with still. It's a long road for me.
So what I'd like to do is, again, 'cause this is not the forum for discussion back and forth, really, it's just public comment so we can get where you're at.
Yes, sir.
And if we can do something quickly, we like to do that. It sounds like we're gonna have to have another sit-down and a discussion to go deeper, and we'll allow Treasurer Slavens to do what she can for you, with you, and then after that, I guess we'll, Treasurer can bring us up to speed with what happens. But that is our process, sir.
So I'll, I'll hear back from you folks, sir.
Schedule something forward to have to meet with Diane's office. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any additional public comment? If none, I would now like to make some public comment or a public comment. This is a little bit unusual, unique, and it's, I think, unique circumstances. Today, we had funeral service over St. John Newman for Mr. John Burdziek, who is a former trustee of Canton Township. And he was involved in many areas throughout our community, served, and I'm gonna read a proclamation, which I shared with the family today. And, and when I'm done reading it, I'm gonna ask that the board, in order, in honor of Mr. Burdziek, to create a motion to allow this proclamation to be read into the formal record for the family, if we could do that. So what I'm gonna do is go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas, John served as a Canton trustee for 13 years, and his tenure on the board was marked with great progress in the Canton community. And John also served on the Planning Commission, Tax Review Board, Zoning Board of Appeals for Canton Township, and John also got involved in committee work as a member of Recreation Advisory Committee, Transportation Advisory Committee, DDA, and John's heart for service extended beyond the business of township administration, as he served in other areas of Canton Township as president of the Homeowners Association at both Windsor Park and Vista 3, and has a, also volunteered his time with the Canton Goodfellows and First Step. And John was a true community leader and should be looked at as an example to those who are coming up to guide Canton Township's future, and we are honored to recognize his work today, as he served his community with dignity, respect, dedication, and commitment. I therefore, by virtue of the authority vested me as supervisor, Canton Township, do hereby honor John Burdziek for his many years of service to our community. I have here unto set my hand and cause seal Canton Township to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2017. So that is the proclamation. In addition to all the work that he's done in the community, he's got a great family, kids still live in Canton, grandchildren, and he will be missed. He was a very loved man. So I would ask for a motion to insert this proclamation into our formal records, if we could.
Supervisor, I move that the board read into the public record the proclamation on behalf of John Burdziek.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Now, it's that time for payment of the bills. Treasurer Slavens?
Mister Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second. Favor of paying the bills again this month? Please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bills will be paid. Thank you. Consent calendar, we have one item.
Mister Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as written, with item C1, establish the Board of Trustees' meeting dates for 2018.
Those in favor, the consent calendar is presented. State aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G1, consideration of first reading of an ordinance amendment, Chapter 90, the Canton Code of Ordinances, Section 90 through 93, Cherry Hill Historic District, by clarifying the parcel identification number of properties identified as contributing to the district, and attach a map to, of the district as referenced in the ordinance.
It's gonna be in the form of two motions. Mister Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 90, Section 90 through 93, the Cherry Hill District, Cherry Hill Historic District, to amend and clarify the parcel identification by numbers for the homes listed as contributing to the district, and further to attach a map of the historic district as referenced in the ordinance.
Summary, Cherry Hill, Cherry Ridge LLC, the entity owning Coleman Parcel, also known as Concord Park, has requested the property be removed from Cherry Hill Historic District, which was established in the 1990s. In order to remove the historic designation from the property, an amendment to the ordinance creating the Cherry Hill Historic District is required. The Historic District Commission, the entity having the authority to create, modify, or terminate historic districts, has approved the request to remove the historic designation of the parcel, and now the Township Board must adopt the ordinance and amendment to make it official. Is there any board questions or comments? We have our attorney, Kristen Kolb, is with us this evening to answer any questions. Just simply clean up some paperwork. Seeing no comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mister Supervisor, I move to table for consideration the proposed ordinance amendment and to schedule a second reading for November 28, 2017.
Those in favor of the second motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G2, consider approval of wage increase for merit full-time, non-union employees for 2018 fiscal year.
Mister Supervisor, I hereby move to approve the proposed 2% across-the-board wage scale increase for merit employees for the 2018 fiscal year, as recommended by the Merit Commission, at their meeting of October 30, 2017.
In accordance with Ordinance 85, Merit Ordinance, and the Merit System Commission's Human Resources Policy Manual, the three-member Merit Commission is charged with recommending the wages and fringe benefits for merit full-time, non-union employees on or before November 30 of each year. At the Merit Commission meeting held October 30, the proposed 2% wage increase, which is consistent with other bargaining units, was recommended for approval by the Merit Commission under Ordinance 85. The wages and benefits of classified employees shall be recommended by the Merit Commission, but shall not take effect until approved by the Township Board, and that's what we're requesting to do this evening. Are there any questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3, consider approval of wage increases for elected officials for 2018 fiscal year.
Supervisor, I hereby move to approve a 2% wage increase for the Canton Township Supervisor, Clerk, Treasurer, and Trustees to be effective January 1, 2018.
Summary, historically elected officials receive the same wage increases approved by the merit employees. It is recommended that the elected officials continue to follow the wage increases of the merit employees as presented in your package. Is there any board discussion or comments?
Just ask if I had a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay.
I'll do this. Oh, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, I know, last year, they took, the elected officials took a decrease because they had done a study, and across the board, they wanted our pay scale to, to be like the surrounding communities. And so I think it's inappropriate, in my humble opinion, to take a, a pay increase. We're newly elected, and they'd just done that study last year, and so I'm not in favor of this.
Any additional public comment or board comment? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion, in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye. Those opposed to the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
So the motion does not carry unanimously. Item G4, consider increasing blanket order for Dominic Cement Works.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve an increase of $15,000 from water account number listed to blanket purchase order, the number listed, for Dominic Cement Work to cover costs of needed concrete repairs due to emergency infrastructure repairs.
Second. Dominic Cement Works is a public works vendor utilized to make concrete repairs caused by emergency water main breaks and other infrastructure repairs. Due to an increased amount of water main breaks in 2017, Public Works has exhausted the blanket purchase order for Dominic Cement Work. Works. In order to make the remainder of the needed concrete repairs, the blanket purchase order requires an increase in the amount of $15,000. Is there any board comments, questions? Go ahead, Anne Ray.
Yeah, we had looked at the sewers, and, you know, we're basically looking at the maintenance of them, and is there a reason, I mean, we're seeing an increase in water main breaks. Is there a estimate it's too, you know, this increasing, or is there, do we expect something, you know, along these lines, or how do we look forward to determining what's coming?
Yeah, so as the, as the system ages, we will see more breaks over time. Right now, the number of breaks that we're having is well below what would be considered industry thresholds. When we did some math on this just a few weeks ago, based on the size of water main system that we have here in Canton Township, if we were average, we would have 112 breaks per year. This year's going to be an exceptional year. I think we may have about 34, 35 this year, by comparison's sake. So, you know, we're watching it, there's definitely been some issues with our system this year because of some of the, some of the work associated with bringing on the water storage. So that's changed some of the pressures in our system and has contributed to a few of the breaks. But we're monitoring that very, very closely.
Is it easier to get ahead of a break? I mean, if you know like a weak area, or just wait till it breaks, then?
Really, really very difficult with the water main system, with sewer system. You know, you can inspect it pretty easily and see where your defects are, and then go out and fix them. With, with the water main system, it's a closed, pressurized system, and it's not impossible, but very difficult to actually inspect.
With that, we're doing some analysis of the water feed into us in terms of pressure variations, and that actually shocked the system and vibrated.
Correct.
We are doing some analysis there and backtracking from where breaks are. Go ahead, Michael.
I know I had the pleasure of going to the SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments' General Assembly a couple of weeks ago, and they compared survey results with the general public, and we, or the local electeds and municipal services directors took the survey results as well, and kinda compared where the infrastructure issues were. Obviously, roads were very high as a concern for both groups. What was interesting for me is water, infrastructure or water mains, I think about 3% of the general public were concerned about water infrastructure, whereas I think right around 26 or 27% of local electeds were concerned. And so it's one of those things where if it's out of sight, it's out of mind, and everyone's concerned about the roads, 'cause you drive on them every day, drains, because flooding can impact, you know, bank encroachments, we hear about that a lot. But, yeah, I mean, you know, well, and maybe now after what happened in Oakland County and the Boyle Water Advisory for quite some time, maybe that poll would have different results. But it was interesting to note the discrepancy between kind of our perception of our infrastructure and the public, so, interesting. Yep.
None, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now I'm on to G5. Consider approval of 2017 budget amendment for document scanning project and increase blanket PO number 2017, 2296, to ARC Document Solutions.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to the blanket PO, to ARC Document Solutions, in the amount of $22,340 for the additional scanning that is required to complete the commercial plans scanning Phase 1 undertaken by municipal services for the on-base document retention project.
Second. In order to complete Phase 1 of the scanning project and building and inspection services, additional funds are needed as there were additional plans discovered after the project started. The estimated amount of the plans also appear to be low due to tightly rolled and bagged plans that remain. The bid cost was per sheet, which results in no change in pricing from the vendor, just more volume to scan. An estimated 26,000 additional pages An estimated twenty-six thousand additional pages, transfer of funds of twenty-two thousand, three forty within the current budget is requested to complete Phase One of the scanning project. Is there any board questions? This is something we'll be working on for many years to come. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Item G six, consider approval of payment of annual software licenses fees to Kiri Works for the on-base document management system.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve payment of twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for the annual software license fees to Kiri Works for the on-base document management system.
Court. Implementation of the on-base document management system is ongoing in public works of Municipal Services. To date, over thirty-two thousand water stop box locations and numerous development associated developments associated with drawings and documents have been put into the system. These documents have also been attributed to assets within our current GIS framework. The project will continue over the forthcoming years as we continue to populate the system with archived documents. The cost of the software license is twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars to be funded by water and sewer funds. Are there any board questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the current motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G seven, consider approval of letter of intent to purchase real estate and authorize real estate purchase agreement for two point four four acres of vacant property on Proctor Road.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, finding no public purpose for certain township-owned property. So whereas the Charter Township of Canton, the township has received a letter of intent to purchase a portion of a parcel owned by the township located on Proctor Road between Denton, sorry, I got lost, forgive me. All right, G seven. All right, scratch that. Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the letter of intent and execute the final purchase agreement for two point four four acres of vacant property with Livonia Builders Sheffield Park LLC for an amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Much, that's much simpler, the second way, Mr. Clerk Seegerst, thank you. In twenty fifteen, township sold five point five of seven point eight acre parcel along Proctor Road to Livonia Builders, the developer of River Hill Ridge PDD. The township had acquired the property through a consent judgment. The remaining southern part of the property, two point four four acres, fronts along the side, north side of Proctor Road between Ridge and Denton. It can be split into two residential lots for residential development. The township has no other public purpose for this property and may declare this parcel as surplus. Livonia Builders Sheffield Park LLC is interested in purchasing the remaining parcel. The negotiated value of the sale is one hundred and eighty-three thousand, including a provision that the board waive the property's split fees of roughly thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Staff will prepare real estate purchase agreement and is requesting authorization for Township Supervisor again to sign the letter of intent and execute the final purchase agreement on behalf of the township. The net proceeds from this sale will be dedicated for park funds. An example may be a pocket park at the location on the east side that Supervisor Williams has asked Leisure Services to consider, and Clerk Seegerst and Treasurer Slavens and I are going to take a road trip pretty soon to look at different parcels on the east side, but looking forward to that. Are there any board questions or comments?
I have a, just to clarify, can you clarify something? So I'm looking at the RBA, and it says the net proceeds will go for the park funds, but down under budget implications, it says the revenue from the sales of property could be utilized for capital improvements to township facilities. So I just wanted clarification there.
Definitely will be earmarked for Leisure Services for a pocket park. Greg, you going to hold me to that? Make sure we spend the money in the right area?
Absolutely, no problem.
Board comfortable with that?
I am comfortable, I'm glad to see it. I, so, just the mechanics, I guess I'd be interested to know, do we have funds designated for purchasing land for parks, or is it just your overall budget out of that, that usually comes from? Yeah, sure. So we would use the money to build the park?
Playground, playground equipment and/or adult fitness equipment, whatever, different features throughout the park.
Which are up in my office, the stuff is not inexpensive.
I guess my comment was, I don't care about the mechanics of it, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't like, now you don't have to put more money from your budget into purchasing land. In other words, we just had our budget study session, and Leisure Services has a certain budget, and this should be net new to that budget, Leisure Services money.
Would be a windfall for their existing, but probably the best way to put it, Wendy, is that a fair statement or no?
Yeah, the revenue is going to hit this budget year in twenty seventeen, and what we will do come the year end time, I mean, we're not going to buy the equipment by December thirty-first, if we even have this cash by December thirty-first. So through our audit process, when we see what's in fund balance, I don't know if it rings any bells hearing when we assign fund balance to specific projects, this, similar to when IKEA gave us the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that had to be spent along Ford Road, we earmark that and assign that fund balance for Ford Road. So through the audit process, we will take that section of our, portion of our fund balance and, you know, kind of restrict it, if you will, for this purpose. And then next year, if we expend the money in eighteen, there will be a budget adjustment, it will hit the expenses in twenty eighteen, but it's going to come out of the earmarked money in our fund balance.
Okay, thanks, that's what I always looking for, thank you.
Additional board comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eight, consider request to create and fill the marketing specialist position.
Supervisor, I move to create and fill the position of marketing specialist, salary grade three.
Second. New position of marketing specialist is being recommended to meet the increased demand of marketing requests in the Leisure Services area. This position was factored by Human Resources Manager, approved by the Merit Commission at salary grade three. Prior to the economic downturn, Leisure Services had two and a half permanent marketing positions plus one to two part-time positions at any given time. During the downturn, Leisure Services did not fill a full-time vacancy and lowered resources to permanent one point five solutions or positions, and just one part-time position. In addition, during this timeframe, Leisure Services added the Village Theater, the Block Youth Program, the Teen Center, Farmer's Market, and multiple special events, sixty-three and two twenty-five compared to seventy-five and twenty-sixteen, all of which require additional marketing support. Since this time, the Canton community has grown by ten percent. To offset the costs of the part-time marketing position that will not be filled, additional costs for this proposed position are being offset by other reductions of the twenty-eighteen budget. These reductions are recurring costs and will continue in future years. And I have to give Wendy and Greg a lot of credit for, this was not a quick, easy, hey, I need to add a head, help me. Greg spent a lot of time providing the budget offsets to deliver the cost of this new position. So, thank you, Greg and Wendy, for working together on that. Took several weeks, and I appreciate your patience, Greg, getting it done. Is there any additional board comments or questions?
What is a grade three salary? What is a grade three salary?
Three salary is?
Packet, wages may or may not be, I, no.
About forty-five thousand? I don't have the exact salary offhand.
We can get that for you, John?
I believe with salaries and benefits, it came to around sixty thousand dollars, if you, once you added the healthcare and FICA and all the fringe benefits.
Full package of about sixty grand a year.
Now, the factoring in the full costs, I assume we're factoring in like, any addition to like, OPAB liabilities or anything like that?
There's no increase to OPAB liabilities because we've closed that, the retiree healthcare to any new full-time, but it did factor in contributing the fifty dollars per pay into the retiree healthcare savings plan for that individual.
Just, and can I just ask, as a matter of, so for like adding positions, my office, for example, we went down a clerk the last couple of years, and I know one of the things we have coming up is the census, and, so I needed a GIS, a person who has GIS capabilities. In the past, we had two, actually. So last time that, when my predecessor, Terry Bennett, had done the preemptive work before the census, there were two people who were on the, kind of, who kind of spearheaded the setting up of all the GIS that needed to go into that. This time around, I believe, engineering has one GIS person as well. And, so my question then is, when we start talking about adding positions, how are, how do we determine strategically, like, is it the right position to be adding? Because in this instance, I think we also did, I know actually, because I met down with the township engineer, township planner, and finance, and we talked about the IT study that was done, which said that there should be somebody outside of engineering that had GIS capabilities, and recommended the hiring of somebody. Now, we have not filled that position. Part of it, I assume, is for budgetary reasons, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
I've been asked, or charged, or assumed the responsibility, reach out to Eastern Michigan University for some expertise in the GIS area. There is definitely a need building and growing for GIS supplemental assistance throughout the organization in the Leisure Services area, in the Municipal Services area, in public safety, probably more than any. And now I am learning, really for the first time, that you have some component needs too. So, the next step is the professor, the head of the GIS program out of Eastern, which is, comes highly recommended and is acclaimed, and one of our two people that do GIS inside our system through Municipal Services. One of them was a graduate of the program, and he's excelling here in Canton. So the punchline is, in the very near future, we are going to be meeting with the gentleman from Eastern to get his perspective and insights on possible ways to structure additional GIS resources within the township, and it's going to be a cross-functional discussion. And now I will include you in that discussion, now that I know you have a need coming. And then where and how we're going to pay for that will be a function of the budgets that each program has.
I don't need to add any, within my department, I don't need to add any bodies, I just, well, I know that Nicole in engineering is fairly, is busy, tasked with keeping up with a lot of like the development that's going on in the township. And so what really amounted to is, in the past, Terry was able to rely on two people to kind of bring a project like this to completion. Now, we've got one, and so for me, it was more just about the...
We have to. We have also, who's the second gentleman that does GIS?
Dave. But there was three previously, really, when you include Dave, yeah.
Okay. But I also, and I believe, but I also believe that the recommendation was to have somebody outside, somebody, you know, because I think part of the problem from an organization's standpoint is the siloing, right? You don't want departments to become siloed, and so the notion of having somebody with that capabilities that could kind of act.
That's exactly the conversation we're going to be having with the professor out of Eastern and our team, and there may be a feedback, tieback through the IT group is perhaps where that should reside, but there's definitely an increasing demand in all the functional areas that exist, that's real.
All right. Well, I just, as we go forward with future budgeting, I mean, as we do, as we factor in increases, right, we just gave a two percent increase in merit, we did two percent for our bargaining units as well, you know, when we look at offsets, when we start adding heads, we really got to make sure that we track that, that's all.
And then, the one other piece of your question that you did ask is, such is the case of why it took several weeks, was Greg presented a business case, a justification, rationalization, why this head should be added. From there, that began the discussion of, okay, we understand the need side, how are we going to, where are we going to find offsets? And that was the more difficult conversation. There is a business case produced for every new position that we're looking at. And it has to clear the muster of not only the directors, my office, as well as HR and finance, so there's a lot of eyeballs looking at this.
So in terms of just the description of what the job is, so you're saying that staff are working one to three hours a day and limiting market requests they can fulfill? Does that mean that when you have a class, they're asking the class to be marketed, but they can't do it because they don't have the time?
That's correct. Yeah, we meet with, our process is, as we're developing our brochure, the Discover brochure as it comes out, all of the specialists and coordinators for their areas have meetings with our marketing team, and we develop a marketing plan for each individual area, and then kind of build that together as a full plan, what, you know, how can we cross-market amongst ourselves? And as a portion of that, as the individuals are stating, here's all the marketing things that I would like to get over the next six-month period, we're having to limit, okay, we can't manage with our current resources to do all of those items, let's select the ones that we can manage to do in order to meet the needs, to get out what we can market.
Then what would you do, because you're saying fifteen percent of classes were canceled due to low enrollment, so what would change that? What would you do differently?
Some of the marketing initiatives that we're not doing, some of the more social media, especially getting more into the social media, the more active interaction with the community that we don't have right now because our resources are strained with the resources that we have in place, as well as some of the larger campaigns that we've talked about doing, especially for like Village Theater marketing campaigns and those sorts of items that we're not doing right now because we don't have the resources and time. That's, that would be a major push for it.
Comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G nine, consider approval to replace fiber link between administrative building and summit on the park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to waive the bid process and authorize the supervisor to sign the contract for the replacement of fiber link between the administration building and the summit on the park, including the split-off component with Western Telcom in the amount of thirty-five thousand and twelve dollars to be paid from cable TV fund account listed, Capital Outlay Computers and Equipment, and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars from the other account, Capital Outlay Land Improvements.
Second. Summary, in September twenty seventeen, while contractors were working on another electrical project on the administrative campus, a severe compromise to the township fiber link line was discovered. This compromise undermines the ability to link, to operate up to capacity and in the immediate danger of overall failure. Due to the oncoming winter weather, as well as the fragility of the present link, township staff is recommending that traditional bidding process be waived as a matter of expediency before the ground freezes. Quotes have been solicited for the replacement installation of the new line. Leisure Services is recommending that the project be awarded to Western Telcom, who submitted the lowest base quote. Subsequent conversations between township staff and Western Telcam have identified the need to include a fiber cable out to the amphitheater, which brings the total cost to forty-two thousand, four ninety-two. Are there any questions, comments? We've got a little pictorial here, maybe you could walk us through where we're doing what?
All right, this is just a diagram of where the fiber link cable run, it's not the exact placement of the current run, we're actually going to run to the, what would be the south side of the administrative building now. Currently, it runs up kind of more towards where the red dot is there on the north side. This will avoid a lot of other underground utility lines... This will avoid a lot of other underground utility lines, so there'd be less chance of causing an issue by running into utility lines. Then this, this line will connect from the administration building over to the summit on the park, and then the additional split will come at about halfway down and run over to the amphitheater, providing us the infrastructure for future connections for wireless in the park or other internet connections throughout the park, which we currently don't have. And what we found is, this was actually a suggestion of our IT manager, Joe, who explored the possibility and got the pricing on this section, and what we found is that if we were to do this section now, it's about seventy-five hundred dollars since they're already onsite, and it won't be a live line that they would be splicing off of if they came back in the future to do this splice, since it's a live line and they wouldn't have the equipment onsite, it would cost two to three times the amount to do this in the future. So, if we ever do want to have this internet connection in the park now is the ideal time to do that, to take advantage of those economies of scale. And currently, we also have, this is, this is our current fiber. You see in the center there, which is severely kinked, there's already been three other breaks that have been repaired on this line. There are three pairs, so six total lines right now, and only two are functional. This new fiber link will have six pairs, so twelve total lines, so it'll provide a lot more speed and capacity for the summit as well.
Greg? So, that was going to be my question, what types of applications it would be used at the amphitheater? So, part of it is providing Wi-Fi for citizens?
Potentially citizens and/or vendors for festivals and that sort of thing. That's a highly requested item in the park is to have, especially for like a Liberty Fest type item, a lot of the vendors want to be able to have the Wi-Fi connection for their...
Process.
For their sites, to be able to process credit cards, those sorts of things. As the festival gets very busy on Saturday night, for example, there was almost no, you couldn't, I couldn't, trying to check the weather on Friday, on Saturday night of Liberty Fest last summer, you could not get a signal through because of the volume in the park. So, this would help alleviate with some of those issues as well.
And you mentioned you're going to a different side of this building, does that mean there has to be work done in this building then to accept that, or?
No, I mean, there'd be some limited, there's nothing, it's just going through the ceilings, that sort of thing, but nothing, no infrastructure issues with this building.
Michael?
Yeah, I think, no, I think it's a great idea. I like that you're, you know, we're going to do it, you know, if we do it now, I like that we would do it for less. I like the idea of connectivity. While I don't think people in parks should be sitting around staring at their phones, I do think, you know, we're connected people, that ship has sailed, right? This is not a fad, and so people being outdoors on a kind of sunny day, working would be awesome. So, I think it's how we interact with our public green spaces and how we interact as connected individuals. I think this is forward-thinking. I like it, congratulations.
This would not provide, we would not have instantly tomorrow, or once this project is done, we wouldn't have the Wi-Fi available. There is still an additional piece for the...
Ennas and, you know.
Thank you.
But this would be like the first step, right?
Technical stuff probably, I think Joe said about another potentially twelve-thousand-ish ballpark.
He said twelve to fifteen thousand, and there's more things to consider if we're going to open it up for public use. It likely will not resolve the issues at Liberty Fest because the Wi-Fi now would be taken up with all public use, and the vendors would not have the ability to have that solo. So, there's other things to work through, you know, depending on what the direction is that the board wants to take, there's other considerations. How do you limit it to the vendors at Liberty Fest time and the public safety needs? How do you, you know, how do you take it away from the public at that point in time? So, it just depends what direction we want to head and how we want to, how we want to handle it. As far as increasing the broadband, which we would definitely have to do if we're planning on opening it up publicly, that's actually not as expensive as you would think. We think that would be about a thousand dollars a year, so that's not that much of an added cost to expand the broadband so more people can access it. But, but there's more to come on that, you know, and what direction we want to head with it. But this definitely gets the infrastructure there for whatever direction the board would like to head in.
Greg?
Is there a reason that for the contractor that compromised the cable, that we, usually they're covered by insurance, that we can't have them cover, I know some of the cost, I know it's a little bit, but usually they will cover any repairs, so if they had to pay for the cost to repair that, could we maybe get that, those funds from them to...
This isn't something that they did, it's something that they actually discovered and brought to our attention in the process. Because we, we had known for quite some time that we were down to only two functional pairs, but didn't know where the break was in the line, and as they were going through repairing, replacing the other electric, they found where the break...
They helped us find that problem.
Yes, basically, they, they found. So, we knew that it wasn't fully functioning, we just didn't know where in that line the break was.
None, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G ten.
Before we do that, I further move, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, a decrease in the expense for the transfer to fund balance of thirty-five thousand and twelve dollars, and an increase in expense to the capital outlay computers and equipment for thirty-five thousand and twelve dollars.
Second? In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G ten, consider authorization of projects for pond bank stabilization project.
In the form of two motions as well. Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the supervisor to sign the contract for the summit and pheasant run hole number ten pond bank reconstruction with JSS McCombe LLC at four eight two-two-eight Conifer Drive in Shelby, Michigan, Shelby Township, Michigan, at four eight three-one-five, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Funds to be paid from the account number listed for the park's capital outlay land improvement in the amount of seventy-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and the second account for pheasant run capital outlay machinery and equipment in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-two.
Second?
In March twenty-seventeen, bids were solicited for the reconstruction of the eroded bank on the retention pond at the front of the summit on pond, on the, and the pond, on hole number ten of pheasant run. JSS McCombe LLC submitted the lowest qualified bid in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars forty cents. Since the low bid amount was greater than the available funds, staff negotiated the scope of the work with JSS McCombe. Leisure Services is recommending award the revised bid in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred to JSS McCombe LLC. As part of the reconstruction of the pond bank, Leisure Services is recommending a new irrigation system be installed around the summit pond. The work is performed by Reliable Landscaping, the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred. The scope of the work and costs were negotiated in accordance with the board-approved agreement for irrigation services executed January thirteenth, twenty-seventeen. Are there any board comments?
Questions?
Noticed it's been down and discussed with Greg last week what's being done, looking forward to it looking better.
In favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eleven.
Second motion real quick, sir. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to Reliable Landscaping Incorporated at eight-two-eight-five Lily Road here in Canton, Michigan, four-eight-one-eight-seven, for the installation of a new irrigation system for the planned reconstructed summit pond bank to be paid from the account number listed for park's capital outlay land improvements. Thank you, Diane.
In favor of the second motion as stated, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G eleven, IT Services renewal of Civic Plus website hosting services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents payable to Civic Plus Incorporated for a renewal of hosting services, software, support, and maintenance services provided by Civic Plus, covering a period of one year.
Summary, IT Services is requesting permission to renew our hosting services and support agreement with Civic Plus Inc., which expires January twenty-second, twenty-eighteen. In twenty-fourteen, Township underwent an exhaustive assessment and migration of our website from in-house to a hosted solution provided by Civic Plus. At that time, a three-year contract was entered into, and the current contract ends January twenty-second, twenty-eighteen. IT Services is recommending extending the current contract for a period of one year with Civic Plus to continue the hosting services support and access to Civic Plus, custom-designed web content and management system. At staff level, we've been talking about this quite a bit, and the purpose for renewing for one year is to give us an opportunity to, or buying us time, to look at other potential options that may be out there for us. So, is there any additional board?
That was my question, so you answered my question, thank you.
Other questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G twelve. Consider resolution, adopting resolution creating the Canton Cares Fund of the Canton Community Foundation, appointing the initial advisory committee.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution creating the Canton Cares Fund of the Canton Community Foundation and appointing members to the advisory committee.
Second?
Canton Township sponsors a number of events throughout the year benefiting seniors, veterans, youth, handicapped, and township employees. However, Township is limited in the financial contributions it can make. Generous business and individuals have contributed their time, money, and goods, however, the donations to the Township are not always tax-deductible for the donor. As a way to encourage more donations, Supervisor is proposing partnering with the Canton Community Foundation to create the fund that would accept tax-deductible donations to help defray the cost of various Township-sponsored programs. The fund would be known as the Canton Cares Fund, and would be managed by an advisory committee made up of Township residents and business owners. Long story short, when I first came into this position, I learned very quickly that all year round, we have events, for example, probably the first example that I came against was the policeman awards ceremony, where we recognize the lifesavers awards, and in that event, we bring in the officers and their families, and we provide them with a pizza dinner. Well, the pizza dinner cannot be paid for by taxpayers' funds, it has to be paid for through donations. That being said, rather than me begging year-round, which is what I've been doing for the last year and with the help of staff, is by creating this fund, hopefully put together an annual budget, go out and do a significant fundraising campaign to load up the kitty for the year, and simplify the processes for it. Furthermore, Clerk Seegrist has got a program that he's considering for...
A scholarship for high schoolers who might be willing to work on the elections.
As well as other things that we may dream up, guys, in the future. So, that's the purpose and the reason for it. Are there any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Steve.
Just a comment. I'm currently Chair of the Board of Canton Community Foundation, and so I asked legal counsel if I should recuse myself from this vote, and in talking to Kristin, I don't, I was told that since I'm not a paid employee of the Canton Community Foundation, that I don't see any benefit personally from this, so therefore, there's no need for me to recuse myself. But if, did I say that correctly, or?
That's, that's part of it. The other part of it is, there are no Township dollars that are going to be flowing to the Community Foundation. So, that really negates any potential conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we move on to item thirteen A, G thirteen A. Feel like I'm calling bingo tonight. Consider request of corporate counsel to, and authorize to proceed as directed regarding a labor matter.
Mr. Supervisor, I, I move to authorize the Township attorney to proceed in accordance with the direction of the board regarding a labor matter as discussed in closed session.
Are there any, we had the closed session this evening, we had the discussion. I don't believe there are any questions or comments at this time. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirteen B. Consider request of corporate counsel, corporation counsel, and authorize to proceed as directed regarding the Hamlet Pond.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the Township attorney to proceed in accordance with the direction of the board regarding the Hamlet Pond as discussed in closed session.
Second? See no board comment, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
I think that concludes our formal business this evening. Very good. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? I'm going to drag this out. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Staff, any closing comments?
Have the Turkey Trot for a Cause coming up on November twenty-third for any individuals who would like to run, walk, or otherwise participate, as well as the underwater bubble show coming up on the twenty-fifth, which will be a very exciting show at the theater if anyone is so inclined. There's a two o'clock and six o'clock show. Their tickets are starting to go fast, though.
Off the top of your head, the age appropriate of that show, is that geared for little guys?
Yes, yes. Kids-appropriate show, absolutely.
Ooh, I would, may I?
Yes.
I would just like to say, this Thursday at Gallimore Elementary School here in the Plum and Canton Community Schools, there will be a celebration of the, the school obtaining Blue Ribbon status, which is a national ranking. We've got a fantastic thing going on here in Canton, and that's a, it's a great, great school, so I will not be able to make it unfortunately, but I know that Treasurer Slavens will be there representing the board, so thank you for that, and congratulations to the students at Gallimore.
Have a great Thanksgiving holiday, everybody.
Comment, those, call for a motion to close?
Second?
Aye?
Aye.
Good night, everyone, thank you.